I'd like to call this work session meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Mayor Rominick?
Here.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Here.
Commissioner Sui?
Here.
Vice Mayor Watson?
Here.
Commissioner Cosbun?
Here.
May we please stand and salute the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This meeting is being conducted in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act of 1975, was advertised, posted, and made available to the public as required by statute. The municipal clerk is directed to include a statement in the minutes of this meeting. Clerk, Madam Clerk, are there any changes to the agenda?
No, Mayor.
Any presentations, seeing none. Public comment on agenda items only. Anybody from the public would like to comment on the agenda items, please come to the podium, state your name, address your concerns for approximately five minutes. Thank you. Mr. Smithson?
Hello, everyone. Doug Smithson, Two Thunderbolt Drive in Millville. Past 27 years, my wife and I have operated, owned and operated Big Sky Aviation at the airport. And I've come here tonight to express my concern regarding the notice of nonrenewal sent to the DRBA in October of 2020 for at least in Millville Airport. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
During the mayor's State of the City address at the Chamber of Commerce last month, this was not even mentioned. I watched it with great attention, and I noticed that it was never even brought up in his State of the City address. I'm concerned that the citizens of Millville are unaware of the ramifications and financial peril that may be facing them as a result of this notice. You're okay. I can see. Now that the city has issued the notice of nonrenewal, it's important to note a few things. First, the city's going to have to pay roughly $20 million to the DRBA to take the airport back by 2029. And this doesn't include a lot of the operational expenses that go along with it after the 2029 deal. Over the past five years, the airport has been losing. They got these numbers directly from the Delaware Bay Authority, approximately on average $375,000 a year. And that number does not include ongoing improvements. We were here in business prior to DRBA taking over the airport in 1999. Since then, roughly $61 million of DRBA and FAA money has been invested at the airport. $61 million in the last 25 years from DRBA and the FAA. Under the stewardship of the DRBA, the airport has been elevated to the next level. With their management team and skill set, they know how to effectively manage and grow the airport. It's become known as one of the best in the region. The city needs to be prepared to match this level of sponsorship. Even if the city takes the airport back, all money generated at the airport must be reinvested there per FAA grant assurances. A couple of meetings ago, Freehold and Doug Albrecht spoke, and I think he spoke incorrectly, when he talked about the city of Wilmington taking back their airport and taking it away from the DRBA. They tried to do that four years ago, but couldn't find a viable sponsor. And now they are back with the DRBA, having them run the airport down in Newcastle. Also during that four-year period, development was pretty much halted at the airport. The FAA is certainly not going to continue to fund projects if they believe that the city's going to take those airports back. Right now, my opinion is there's just no plan. This makes no sense to try and take this airport back. If the city done its due diligence, they had realized what a good thing they had that would have left well enough alone. I've spoken to several local leaders, including Freehold Director General Soro, Senator Mike Testin, Congressman Jeff Dandron, and all recognize the economic driver that the airport is, and they share my concerns. The city issuing this notice of nonrenewal was uninformed and has the potential to hurt not only the city, but will certainly be a significant burden to the taxpayers of Millville. This is happening quietly, and the citizens of Millville need to be made aware of the impact that they will have on the financial. I urge you to pivot right here, renegotiate with the DRBA, and let them continue to manage the airport. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Smithson. Seeing no one else, I will close the public comment on agenda items. Discussion of commissioners, Commissioner Hewitt?
Nothing at this time, Mayor.
Thank you. Commissioner Sui?
Yeah, I received several calls about ordinance number 17-2, adding two additional lieutenants, taking us up to six lieutenants. So members of the public were concerned that we'll be oversupervised. You know, the email we got from the chief said we have 52 active officers for various other reasons. So if you take six lieutenants, 15 sergeants, a captain and a chief, we'll be up to 23 supervisors for 52 active officers. That's almost a two-to-one margin rather than the, whatever it is, 3.64 to one that's recommended. I could understand doing this perhaps if you had a fully manned force, but you don't. So when you do promote, you're going to take sergeants and make them lieutenants, you're going to take officers and make them sergeants, and now you're going to have less patrolmen. So there are the questions I'm getting. The other comments I got is, is this going to help with the four-wheelers and motorcycles driving down the street? Is this going to help with the homeless living in the parks that set two fires a couple of weeks ago? Is this going to help with our crime rate? Is this going to help with recruitment and retention? There are the questions I got from about seven or eight different people. I got various questions. Now, I know the prosecutor has recommended in a report that we do this. The last copy of that report I saw was dated 2009. So I emailed the chief to find out if there were any new ones. And sir, he responded, "Sir, the prosecutor has not issued any additional recommendations since her previous letters in which she requested department increase supervision." If asked, I'm sure she would issue a letter of support. So, you know, this has come before public safety directors for over a decade. And what I'm concerned about myself, when you guys see the budget and you see the increase in taxes, we'll all be wearing diapers. So this is all about allocation of resources as well as those questions that I've gotten that I've passed on to you to see what you guys, if you guys have an answer for.
To follow up, I've gotten plenty of calls. I've gotten emails about this exact thing. We sat in a closed session about this and the chief spoke. So I think that we pretty much know what the situation is. Right now, that's all I'm going to say about that. I imagine there'll be lots of comments both ways coming to the regular meeting tonight, and then I'll speak to that at that time.
For a meeting with the chief, the chief had certain ideas. You know, a lot of it was based on, you know, what you said, retention. Right now, there's no special...
There are no special units, squads, in this city right now.
So for retention purposes, you mean this gives, you know, the patrolmen, you know, the officers, you know, some hope of, you know, progressing, you know, something to look forward to. As of right now, this is just an ordinance. This isn't saying that we're going to hire two lieutenants right away. I believe a lot of this is a plan. You know, with the lack of officers that we have, we're going to have a lot of new ones becoming on, potentially this year. We're trying to figure out a way to try to send as many officers as we can. Obviously, that comes within experience. How do we counter that? We need supervision to oversee those new officers. If we're looking at hiring maybe 15 to 20 officers within the next year or so, you know, they're going to need the appropriate personnel that has the experience to lead them, to guide them. Right now, one of the issues that we have is our sergeants aren't out in the street, you know, being with the officers. And this is an attempt to do so. Lieutenants can, you know, do what they do inside the building. Sergeants are out in the streets, boots on the ground, you know, trying to guide those new officers that need that experience. I believe this is just the planning, you know, from what I understood. This is just planning and getting it into motion. You know, we do have a new commission come up this year, and we hope that we can, you know, put that next commission on the right foot and, you know, have them prepared for, you know, the new officers coming in.
So are you saying it's going to aid with recruitment? Is that what you're telling me?
Well, if we have positions that may be available, you know, as, you know, for promotionary reasons, it might draw, you know, new officers to us. You know, if they think that they could come here and maybe get a lieutenant's position or, you know, sergeant's position, yeah.
I would suggest you guys read the Police Chiefs magazine for December 2024, and it talks about the recruitment issues, and it may give you a little bit better insight on those subjects.
We had that in a closed session last week.
Did you read the issue?
We, I've gone over it.
There's a lot of police, there's a lot of police departments that are going through the same thing that we are. You know, obviously, you know, we need help, you know. So being active with public safety, you know, the addition of the new dispatchers, trying to settle contract negotiations, maybe giving a little bit of hope to those officers to stay here so they can, you know, progress and get promotions are all actions to try to keep officers here and let the public safety know that they're supported, let the residents know that we're concerned about their safety.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Cosbun?
Nothing at this time.
Vice Mayor Watson?
Thank you for letting me finish my drink. Joanna, thank you so much for you and your department putting this together tonight. A lot of hard work. I know you're under a lot of pressure, so kudos to you and your assistance.
Thank you.
Very welcome. I'm not going to bring it up on regular session, but last night we had an issue with a remediation site next to South Jersey Gas. I just want to thank the engineering department or water department for responding quickly. And thank you Garrison for, you know, coming out and trying to get that repair done. I was able to stop out, and it was not a, not a good site. So I think that's all I really have for that. Thank you very much. He's not here.
He left.
Yeah, just sharing your opinion. It's, you know, it's good to hear from, you know, the people that are dealing with the DRBA on an everyday basis and, and obviously their business. So thank you for coming out.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Yeah, I would like to thank Doug Smithson for making his comments. Brock, would you care to elaborate why, you know, why we're still in closed session discussing this matter? Just so the public is informed, or do you not want to?
Probably shouldn't.
Just the reasoning, it's a discussion topic of sensitive information.
Well, I think that really there are, there's a decision that you're going to have to make as to what direction we go in, and I think there's two options. The reason for the matter going into closed session is, you know, to discuss contract negotiations with either the DRBA or Cape May County. And I think a decision's going to have to be made as to which way we're going to go. It is a closed session item because it's not just attorney-client, but it's also deliberative process and contract negotiations.
Thank you. Other than that, anything else? Do not think so? Seeing no new business, we have now reached the public comment portion of our meeting. Anyone who would like to address the commission, please go to the podium, state your name, address your concerns, please limit your concerns to approximately five minutes.
I was going over the agenda, and I just had a couple of questions on the agenda for me tonight. So hopefully you'll be able to answer them for me before the meeting. The tax collector here, Lee Weaker, I just wondered, in there it says you're not applying up on municipal lien holders because it's too expensive. That doesn't make sense to me because you need to propose on them to get them back on the tax rolls. So if you're just leaving them sit there and the lien's building up, building up, it costs money because you can put more than one lien, correct? With the tax on paid another year, there would be another lien, another lien.
I think that's accurate.
So you're going to pay the liens that the tax sale is going to keep on going? That needs to be cleaned up. I don't know what page on, but it was hundreds of thousands of dollars. There are quite a few properties on it. If you can propose on them, the expense would be worth it because you should get it back in taxes once the process is done. Correct? Thank you.
Well, if someone buys the lien and then they foreclose on the, or either the city or the lien holder...
The city's in position to foreclose. So the city would then promptly, then they can have the property sales, and that will get back in the tax rolls.
Or lien holder can buy it, and then they can foreclose after a period of time as well.
I think, you know, it's because it's on the municipal lien foreclosure. But there's a whole page of properties there. So that, you can look into that. But that's something that some of the several grants that the city has, the UEZ money can be used for because those can be used in problem areas. I'm sure some of those houses have to be in a problem area town or a UEZ area town. And you can use money from the UEZ funds, the NPP grant, and the CDVG funds to help you with that process to take care of it. Just asking for legal advice while I'm here. The other thing, so that one I know you can't answer now, but that's something that I could look into and take care of because I think that's important to the city. And you're going, cleaning the budget now, if that can be put into the budget, you're going to have to take in something else. You don't have to increase taxes even more than you're going to have to, but that is something that I think is important in my opinion. I didn't understand the COLA ordinance that's on the agenda. I'm assuming that means that you already know you're going to raise taxes over 2.5%. And then how, how correct is that assumption?
Which ordinance are you talking about?
COLA ordinance. Same, instead of 2.5 is illegal now, you want to be able to do a 3.5. So I'm assuming it will be at least a 3.5%.
Hold on, Lynn, we're still having a problem with your mic. Can I have Joanna come in?
All right. Did you hear me about the COLA? I didn't understand the COLA. I'm assuming it means you want to do a 3.5% tax increase before the budget's brought up.
Do you want me to answer it now or no?
Wait till, just wait, keep on going, Lynn. We'll answer your questions the best available once we're finished.
All right. The NPP grant, which stands for Neighborhood Preservation Program, you're voting on that tonight. I wanted to know what you're using it for. And then, and I wanted to know if the commission's deciding on what it's being used for, if the Holly City Development Corporation is making those decisions for the commission. Because that money can be used for things such as educational, self, neighborhood organization. That's the library. So the library needs money. You can potentially use some of that grant money for the library. You can do demolitions with it. You can do housing rehab. You can do code enforcement. They're all things that can be taken out of the budget, taxpayer budget money, and be taken off the back of the taxpayer and use the grant to pay for it. So I just wanted to know if the commission's deciding and looking at all those factors or just leaving in the hands of a consultant. Glad you're voting on both those things tonight, so hopefully you know that. And then I just wanted to mention, you have a lot of UEZ funds. I'm hoping that they're also being used to decrease taxes.
Yeah, I'm looking at the ordinances, and are you referring to the CAP bank ordinance?
Yeah, I think it says COLA.
Well, that, every town I've ever been involved with enacts that ordinance every year.
That's not true. Because we voted no.
Well, maybe you voted no, but every...
And it did not go through.
It did not pass.
So I know it didn't pass, so you don't have to do that.
But it's something that your auditor recommends that you do because it gives you wiggle room that you're not otherwise going to have.
Which hopefully you don't need, and hopefully you won't increase taxes substantially.
It doesn't require you to increase taxes. What it does is...
But it gives you the open door, and you bank on it. And then down the road, it enables the commission down the road to potentially increase taxes like 6 cents.
I spoke to the CFO about that today. She said it's for next year.
So it's so that it gives them the door to increase taxes?
CAPs, you know, call it caps for this year.
So if by some miracle you don't use it all the bank, then all that will be in there for the future commissions that they can then increase taxes.
It will be a miracle if we don't use most of it.
I'm hoping for a miracle.
And it's been done every year except the year that you're talking about or the years that you're talking about.
And it didn't hurt anything. It didn't hurt anything.
It did not.
So...
I'm probably not the best one to explain it. CFO can explain it a lot better than I can. But from my understanding, we were like, we're restricted on how much we can raise our budget every year. From why I get out of it is the CAP bank allows us to take an accountability in a way, something that we can't account for, gas prices going up, electric bill going up, whatever that case may be. So if we have to exceed budgetary costs, we do have some kind of cap that we can rely on. That's the best that I can explain it, other than if we don't meet that criteria, that, say for this year, if we don't go over the budget this year, that goes into the cap for next year. I mean, that's the best that I can explain it.
I understand. I guess my problem is it's a safety net that if everyone was looking at the budget in their departments and really making hard decisions, it's too easy to say, "Oh, we have the extra money. Let's just go ahead and raise the taxes." Everybody should be looking at their budget, seeing what they can decrease, looking for alternative revenues, being creative with the grants, working together in a work session, discussing the grants, what you need, what do we think can be covered by the grant? And then if you don't have that safety net, it forces you to do that more. And I didn't see it being done with the last budget and the budget before, unfortunately, and the taxes have gone up every time in the past seven years, every year. On paper, it looks like maybe it didn't go up last year with the, because of the trash. But in reality, you raise taxes six or seven cents.
Seven cents last year.
Seven cents last year because you didn't give it all back from what the cost was. And times are tough, and people are having a hard time. And you really need to think about that when you're looking at the budget, and it's just going when we have to do it. There's ways to do things. There's different departments that could be making more money if the hard work is done to look at that, which I hope will happen.
We are, and we are looking after the meeting the other night. We're looking on my side at where we can use it downtown with the PD and stuff like that.
Yeah, because there's revenue sources too that can be done without taxing the taxpayer more. So hopefully, I guess you'll just explain, the only question that I have that hopefully will be answered is about the NPP grant. Thank you.
So for the, for the police department, I talked to, for the UEZ money, I asked Ross how much he could use for strictly patrols in the UEZ zone. So he said $70,000, so that's coming up in a future application. And for community policing, said he doesn't have the officers, but we're putting money in there anyway. I don't really expect you guys to fill 20 positions. I think you'd be lucky if you filled four. But we're putting the money there so that it's available if you can use it.
Exactly, because we have already talked about it.
Seeing no one else, I will close the public comment portion of the meeting. Closing comments of commissioners. Commissioner Hewitt?
Nothing for now.
Commissioner Sui?
Nothing for now.
Commissioner Cosbun?
Nothing for now.
Vice Mayor Watson?
Nothing for now.
Any questions? Resolutions?
We have a resolution authorizing a closed session for the following matter, a contract negotiations with Cape May County and/or the DRBA concerning the continued operation of the Millville Executive Airport.
Make a motion.
Second motion.
The motion is the second. Can I have roll call, please?
Oh, sorry. I'm learning. Commissioner Hewitt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Watson?
Yes.
Commissioner Cosbun?
Yes.
Commissioner Sui?
Yes.
Mayor Rominick?
Yes.
Okay. Sorry, I'm slow. Sorry, I'm slow.
Be back.